The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the joint board meeting for April 2nd, uh, April 12th. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
May I ask the members to please introduce themselves, standing by far right?
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Mike Ferini, Board of Finance.
Calvin Brown, City Council.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony Demato, City Council.
Derek Chincheluski, Board of Finance.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cott King. Item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on March 8th, 2016.
Move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number two.
It's the consent calendar, and there are ten items, and if somebody would like to entertain a motion to waive the reading, we can waive the reading of those ten items.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
And then I would also ask for a motion to approve then the ten items as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number three.
To make an additional appropriation of $2,940,000 within the capital projects fund funded by bonding for synthetic fields at Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern High Schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, um, I just, for the record, I just want to make mention that, um, the motion that was made, uh, this motion that was made, uh, in the Finance Committee was to move the process forward, but with the caveat that we look for other alternatives other than the crumb rubber. And I know that wasn't, that's not stated in the motion, but I want to put that on there for the record.
Yep.
Through the chair. Um, I would also like to add that, um, when we had extensive discussion at the Board of Finance meeting, it was very clear that the city, the city side, um, or for city sports that are non-Board of Education-type related events would have at least eighty percent of the field capacity on evenings and weekends. And I think that's real important because that is a commitment we've made to the taxpayers to make sure that as they pay for this investment, that not only can their students that are in school have a nice, nice beautiful fields to play on for their games, but the general public itself will have access to these fields. And we felt, in addition to the alternative fill, that that was, you know, worth mentioning, and it was very important to the Board of Finance to ensure that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four.
Opposed.
One, one opposed?
Yes.
One opposed. Any other discussion? Uh, item number four. Threw me off. Sorry.
To make an additional appropriation of $525,000 within the capital projects fund funded by bonding for alternative fill for the synthetic fields at Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern High Schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Yes, sir. Through the chair. Um, as Commissioner Burns had mentioned, um, the Board of Finance was very adamant that this would not be crumb rubber fill, and that this motion allocates the funds to look at the alternatives. The Field Committee, along with Parks, is coming back to the Board of Finance with some cost estimates and those for each of the different types of alternative fills. Um, and it was very important that, um, again, as, as my fellow commissioners stated, crumb rubber is not an option.
Any other discussion? Hearing none.
May I? Maybe, yeah. This appropriation, Act 125, it's actually to appropriate the number now. There's no discussion after that.
It's up to 525.
Up to 525, so it'll come back in front of us? With just explanation, though, we approved the alternative. Is that what it is? I want to understand what we say yes or to.
I believe it was coming back to the Board of Finance for discuss, the, the committee is going to come back to the Board of Finance to show us the different options and the prices, and then the Board of Finance will then decide which one we're going to fund. And if it's 300,000 or if it's 500,000, we at least have the, the number in the queue so that we already have the ball moving forward.
Not to exceed, and they're also going to provide the MSDF sheets as well for each of the alternative fills.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five.
Um, Your Honor, I just want to clarify, did Commissioner Kelfi, you're still, you're voting, oh, yes on this?
No.
You're voting, gonna vote no?
Yes. I will be voting no on items three, four, and five.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item number five.
To make an additional appropriation of $150,000 within the capital projects fund funded by bonding for relocating the bleachers from Muzzy Field to Bristol Central High School and bringing them up to compliance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstain, Your Honor.
Okay. Uh, one abstention, one, uh, no vote, motion passes.
And who was the no?
Orlando. Orlando.
No.
Oh, no, then who was the abstention?
Tony.
Tony, okay.
Item number six.
To transfer $109,428 to the general fund contingency account from the miscellaneous account.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number seven.
To make an additional appropriation of $120,000 within the capital projects fund for professional fees.
Move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eight.
To transfer $120,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out capital projects.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number nine.
The monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board members. We had two significant things happen in the world of Bristol finance today. First item is, is we rolled over and sold taxable notes. Those are the notes on the mall property, they are taxable, and the sale came in at 1.19%. Excuse me, that's practically free money, but, um, but actually, uh, it was almost doubled what it was the last time we rolled the notes, and that's because, um, the federal funds didn't have the increase of 25 basis points. So they increased the 25 basis points, and it's a reflection, the last time it was .64. Nevertheless, at 1.19 for nine months, it's, uh, it's still a very viable thing as far as the interest that we're going to be paying. And then at 4:30 this afternoon, we received from CCM an update to what's happening with the state of Connecticut. The governor, at late in the afternoon, if you're not aware, released his numbers as far as ECS was concerned. And before 4:30, we were down by, by the Appropriations Committee, $547,000 in ECS, which would be .16 mils. That was not accounted for in the, in the presentation that I made to the Board of Finance last week. So, um, and what happened at 4:30 is the governor's proposal reinstated those, that 547,000, so we, it's good news for us, we don't have to worry about that. He also, the CCM also stated that tomorrow, uh, they didn't say morning, but they did say tomorrow, that there will, the, the rest of the numbers will, will be, um, will be released. And what's important to us is the tax, sales tax sharing revenue. We, uh, we were told to receive back in February, 1.8 million dollars through a discussion of the Board of Finance. We acted prudent, we only put half of that, about 900,000, into the budget, because it does, there's a lot of uncertainty with that. Tomorrow, we'll, we'll know the number, if it's, uh, if it's anywhere between zero and the 1.8, we'll know that. And we're, we're thinking that, uh, the governor's probably going to reinstate that. However, there should be a caveat, because on April 19th, the state of Connecticut will know their sales tax revenues coming in. So Limbo's Office will, uh, will have those numbers available, so even though we may, we'll have a number tomorrow for the sales tax, which will be very useful to us as far as determining what the, um, what our total revenue structure is, there could be a caveat on April 19th, when the sales tax revenues come in. If they come in low, there may be some changes that may take place at the governor's level. But the, if they come in reasonably high, then there won't be any changes, so I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. But it gives us plenty of time, because the numbers will come in, uh, to the state on the 19th, and, uh, and we've got to the 26th until Cheryl's Board approves the budget, so we've got a lot of time to make changes. And of course, if we have to make changes even later than that, it could always be done at the joint board. And that's my report.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Council meeting in five minutes. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting, Tuesday, April 12th. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the troops on active duty. Can I please ask the council to introduce themselves, standing by far right?
Anthony Demato, District One.
Joe DeZilz Gagny, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fortier, District Three. Town Clerk Theresa Pack.
Assistant Dawn Labella.
And I'm Mayor Ken Cott King.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt, I have been announcing the O.M. show for the past few months. It is this Friday and Saturday at St. Paul Catholic High School, 7:30 both nights, and a 1:30 matinee on Saturday. I am a cast member in the show, and this is show week, so I do apologize to everybody here, but I do have to get back to my rehearsal, and I would like to move that appointments, number 10, be heard at this time instead of later on.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Appointments, Personnel Director, to reappoint Diane Ferguson for your term to 4/20. Do I have, uh, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh, Your Honor, I move the motion.
Your Honor, under discussion, I'm wondering if...
Motion made and seconded, uh, motion moved.
Your Honor, it's an improper motion.
Motion is moved.
Improper motion.
Uh, all discussion stops. Voting starts on my left roll call, please, roll call. Motion was moved. Ends discussion.
Improper motion. Point of information, point of order, improper.
Motion, um, motion moved. The motion moved, it was seconded.
It's improper, and we do not have to vote on an improper motion.
Here your vote.
My vote is absolutely no.
No? Councilman Proleski?
I don't understand the issue, why is it an improper motion?
The motion was moved, and it was seconded.
It's not a proper motion, I'm not even...
It is a proper motion.
You should be voting on this tonight, and you can't call for a motion without public part, without discussion on the council as a way to, to shut out opposition.
Motion was moved and seconded.
This is absolutely negligent and criminal.
Mayor, is this something we can discuss?
No. The motion was moved and seconded. These are Robert's Rules of Order that we follow. You may not like the rules, but these are the rules.
Yeah, because you're the mayor, and you can do whatever you want, right?
This motion was moved and seconded. Mayor, is this...
Raise your voice, it's not going to change, it's going to change the Robert's Rules.
We were elected, we have something to say, we can say.
Point of order was, we go by the Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order say motion was moved, motion was seconded, now it ends all discussion, now it goes to a vote.
I'm asking you for a part of clarification, please.
I just did.
You didn't, you didn't hear my question yet.
Go ahead.
The, I, is, I thought the motion is to move it up in the calendar. Is this a motion that precludes discussion?
Motion moved it up, we voted on that, now we're voting on the, the appointment of the Personnel Director.
Without discussion?
That's right. The, the motion was moved, which means it ends all discussion. We've done this in the past, I don't know what the confusion is here.
Mayor, I'm asking you to recuse yourself from this vote, because I don't think you're...
Motion was moved and seconded.
I think you've got a conflict of interest, and I think it's improper for you to vote on this matter. I'm asking you to recuse yourself from this vote.
Yes.
No.
Uh, yes, motion passes. Diane, congratulations, I have to, I have to apologize for your...
Your Honor, I don't have the vote. I don't have the vote.
Vote for three, motion passes.
Who is...
The three Democrats voted no, the three Republicans voted yes.
So make a political count.
Not political, it's fact.
Well, you're all witnesses.
Next one, Commission on Agencies, to appoint Natalie Barrett to replace Janet Percarelli, Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 316.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Development Authority, to appoint Robert Pazaman to replace Myra Beryl Sampson, Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 1217.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Commission with Persons for Disability, to appoint Joseph Karlikowski to replace Kathleen Nelson, resignation 11116, unexpired term to 618.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Parking Authority, Bristol Parking Authority, to reappoint Mary Beth McWatts, McWatts, and to reappoint, I know I got that wrong, to reappoint Todd LaRue, three-year term to 419.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Startup Bristol, to reappoint Lawrence Covino to replace Adam Van Wu and resign no term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Youth Commission, to appoint Joy Harrison to replace Crystal Carvino, Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 318.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I am all going to make some council, uh, books, some council changes on the boards. Commission on Aging, to replace Mary Fortier with Dave Proleski. Real Estate Committee, to replace Mary Fortier with Dave Proleski. Tenure Capital Improvement Committee, to replace Dave Committee with Jody Gagny.
Replay, I'm sorry, what was?
To replace, uh, Dave Proleski with Jody Gagny. Commission on Disabilities, to replace Mary Fortier with Dave Proleski. Mayor's Task Force on AIDS, to replace Calvin Brown with Dave Proleski. Fire Board Commission, to replace Dave Proleski with Mary Fortier. Burlington, Bristol Health District, we had no appointment, to appoint Dave Proleski. Thank you. Okay. Item number two.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on March 8th, 2016.
Motion.
I'm sorry.
Move the approval.
A motion made, or second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Uh, Joy made the motion.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to public participation, I do have to excuse myself and get back to rehearsal. I apologize to everybody here, and I hope to see you all at the O.M. show this coming weekend.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you.
Public participation. Item number one, Steve Collins. This is different. Do we get to throw stuff at you now?
Well, it's something fair. Gosh, you guys do know how to make me miss being out here writing about you. I, uh, I, I wanted to come here to begin with, just to say thank you to Mayor Cott King, to all of you, and really to, to the whole community. I, um, when I resigned from Bristol Press back in December after, um, we learned of my publisher's grotesque conduct, um, I got an awful lot of support from you, and from many of the people here, and from the whole community, and I just want to thank you, I truly appreciate all of that. Um, I also wanted to invite each of you, and everybody really, to a special concert this Sunday, featuring Wesleyan Professor Neely Bruce's magnificent composition that puts the Bill of Rights to music. He wanted to hold it here in Bristol to highlight the importance of a free press, because he saw the issue that was occurring here, and I'm glad that that proved possible. Um, Sunday's concert is going to be a wonderful patriotic event, featuring a beautiful multimedia show, some great instrumentalists, a community chorus with several dozen singers that include two former city councilors, who are actually doing something useful now, and my wife Jackie and my son Kieran. And both Neely and I will have a little bit to say at the concert, but I promise I won't yammer on for long. And at the end, there'll be a chance for anyone who has questions to ask them. The concert takes place at 4:00 PM this coming Sunday at Prospect United Methodist Church on Federal Hill. Come if you can, it's a public event, open to anyone, and, uh, thanks. If I have any time left, you can give it to Sean.
No, no time. Steve, it's nice to see you here, and even better is you without a pen.
I bet. I would have had time.
Cheryl Tebow.
Cheryl Tebow, 73 Yard Drive, Forestville. Couple things, and Steve talked me into doing this, um, so, um, I just wanted to also talk about a couple events, mayor, council members, folks at home, folks in the audience. Um, the first event involves Bristol's first digital scavenger hunt, and this is a, an event that's put forth by the youth groups of Grace Baptist Church in an effort to raise money for Bristol Community Organization and World Vision to end world hunger and homelessness. This event is open to all members of Bristol, or whatever town, form a team of four, $25 entry fee, and you will go out into the community for two hours and do a digital scavenger hunt, and the winner gets to bring home a trophy and bragging rights. So we're looking for people to support this event that will benefit world hunger, or help stop world hunger and homelessness in our town. And then, of course, the week after, where would I be without talking about the duck race? May 1st, the first Sunday in May, will be our 12th duck race. This has become a fabulous block party, it's not just a duck race, it becomes a block party, a craft fair, kids' games, and it's just a way, it's a, an invitation to the entire city. It's not just a Forestville event, it's come one, come all. There's no admission to come to the event itself. If you want to have a duck in the race, that's a $5 fee, tickets are on sale, and we hope you will all come down, and what's my...
They're on sale in my mayor's office, in my mayor's office.
Oh, he has tickets for sale in his mail off, uh, in his mayor's office, but I have some in my purse, so if somebody wants one now, you can save me, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, Daniel Satula? Dan Satula?
Good evening, Daniel Satula, 135 Denver Lane here in Bristol. Uh, the reason I'm here is that, uh, as you recall, I was back here in February, and there was a referral to the Police Commission, and also to the zoning enforcement officer in regard to our request for a stop sign installed at the intersection of Denver Lane and Timber Lane. Uh, the, the March meeting for the Police Department, which the police did send a letter, it was turned down again, and I was wondering if there was a zoning report in regard to the shrubbery.
The zoning, um, Guy, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but I know, I know the issue, um, tell me if I'm wrong, Guy, that was looked at, the shrubs were within the zoning, uh, requirements, so there was no violation there. Guy, did I get that right?
Yeah. Uh, I'm just going to say this. I served on the City Planning Commission there for 16 years, and knowing all the terminology of zoning and whatnot, I disagree with Guy 100%. Uh, the issue, okay, is a street yard, and, uh, the requirements for corner lot street yards, okay, have to comply with what's in the zoning, and the existing hedge that is there does not. But Guy has the right to say what he wants to say, but as I say, uh...
It was, it was actually, it was the zoning officer who made the, made the call, not that guy.
Yes, I understand.
Guy, you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Yep, Monica's went out, and she just, she has to go by the regulation, and regulation is a 25-foot radius from the intersection of the streets. So she went out there, she asked for public works, help with public work, she actually contacted the owner of the property, met him out there, and, uh, found that it's beyond that border, so we don't have, uh, any jurisdiction to order those shrubs cut. Now, Mr. Satula can make an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that's the normal, um, and then plead his case be, be, before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the council can't do anything about a decision of the zoning officer.
Yeah, my reason for being here was to see if there was a report, as we received, I, I represent the five property officers, and, uh, if there was a report turned in, and obviously there wasn't. Uh, I will pursue that, and again, I will say to you that I'm very experienced in that area, and I'm sure that I can come up with a, uh, a very good point. One other point is this, that, uh, you probably have a letter from the Police Department in regard to the reasons we were turned down. I did look at the section in the federal highway traffic statutes and whatnot, and it's very unfortunate, they quoted a section, which I can tell you, for the reasons of denial. It's very unfortunate that they didn't read the section prior to that, which set the guidelines up for making that decision, but that's why they're going to accept that. And also, just the other thing, I just want to know if the city's going to start, because the first stipulation in the letter for denial of the stop sign was that you don't have to install a stop sign if the traffic count is, unless the traffic count is in excess of 6,000 cars per day. My gosh, I hope you folks start early, because it's going to be removing 85% of the stop signs in the city of Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, did I ask a question?
Yep. Dan?
Oh, yes.
What's the neighbor's response? Is he, he's not willing?
The neighbors are furious. As a matter of fact, a couple of them want to file a legal, legal notification.
No, I meant the neighbor who owns the bush.
I haven't talked to him.
No one's asked him.
Has anybody talked to him?
No one's asked him to cut the bush.
I, I don't think it's my requirement or any of us...
I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
of 6,000 cars per day. My gosh, I hope you folks start early, because it's going to be removing 85 percent of the stop signs in the city of Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just ask a question?
Yep. Dan?
Oh, yes.
What's the neighbor's response? Is he, he's not willing?
The neighbors are furious. As a matter of fact, a couple of them want to file a legal, legal notification.
No, I meant the neighbor who owns the bush.
I haven't talked to him.
No one's asked, no one's asked him to cut the bush?
I, I don't think it's my requirement or any of us people...
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
No, no one has it at all, no.
Maybe, maybe someone could go approach the homeowner.
You know, I know the bell rang, but if you read the zoning, the zoning is very unclear, and I'm going to take this to the zoning commission, because I've got two stipulations, which I stated in the submission in February, and, and they're contradictory, and I, you know, and I've looked at other towns, and it's so simple a fix, and again, we're talking about street vision, height of, height of that.
I would go to the zoning board of appeals.
Gonna do that, gonna do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night. Frank Kramer.
Thank you, Frank Kramer, 40 Crescent, Craig, Bristol. First question I wanted to ask is, does, is there an announcement ever made when the turf committee or turf council meets?
I don't think, they have not met yet, there's been no meeting scheduled yet.
They haven't been in the past year or two?
We've had some meetings that were posted, yes.
They were posted?
Yes.
Okay.
But since, since the Board of Finance, there's been none, none scheduled.
Okay, so there's none scheduled as we speak right now?
Ed, where's Ed? There's none scheduled yet, right?
No.
None, none scheduled yet.
Okay, great. Dave, congratulations on your appointment. I think it's a health-related type of Board of Health between Burlington and Bristol? I think you just got appointed.
Physical health or mental health, Frank, he had to clarify it. I think it might be...
Both might be appropriate.
Very appropriate, thank you. Thank you for noticing, by the way.
Okay, because this may speak to that, and you might have some interest in this.
Great.
Anyway, well, Coach Amy Griffith from the University of Oregon has compiled a list of student athletes who've been playing on artificial turf. She began compiling this list in 2014, and it was less than 100. Now, it's 2016, and we have over 203 childhood athletes who have contracted cancers of all types, and there's one thing they have in common, and that's playing on synthetic turf. And today, approximately two years later, all these cancers are basically concentrated in soccer players, mostly goalkeepers, who dive into crumb rubber, and those are the preponderance of childhood athletes who've contracted cancers based upon this correlation. But while those who spoke out on this issue here in Bristol, I, you know, I want to applaud the finance committee, because at least they had a presence of mind to at least consider the alternative besides crumb rubber, and that's either cork or corn husk or coconut shells or what have you. But I'm not so sure that that was done out of actual concern for students or out of political expediency. Only time will tell, because guess what? These alternative infills cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, so now we have the specter of over $3 million for the synthetic turf project that we're embarking upon. Now, the controller of Bristol said that with the bonding, it's going to cost approximately $5 million, with this extra cost of a couple hundred grand, it's going to be over $5 billion.
Thank you.
That's it? Three minutes of beds?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Take care.
Sean Roost.
Good evening, Sean Roost, 53 Lancaster Road. I'd like to speak for a minute about demographics of Bristol, which is intrically tied to the plan across the street. You could see that in the CEDS plan that Frank McCastro and, I believe, Mr. Valeska participated on, where it says in the minutes that we need to be careful when we join other towns as we begin to alter the regional demographics. There was a little discussion about community development block grant funds and HUD's new rule. One thing I have that I find very concerning about HUD's new rule is if you look at furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing, according to governing.com, they say what this means in practice is that HUD is going to provide extensive data to communities highlighting racial differences in jobs, education, and access to transportation in their areas. Local housing authorities or other agencies will have to hold public meetings to discuss their findings and then incorporate ideas for how to address segregation in their master plans every five years or risk losing federal housing dollars. And, and this has happened in other communities where they, they use the smart growth and transit-oriented development to build, and then, well, now, it's not a complaint-driven process anymore. It's going to be completely reported, and we've been reporting the demographics, I believe, since 2011, when we had R. Cole Kennedy Consulting do a review of our CDVG, our impediments to fair housing, rather. And item number four in that report, which is on the city website, is lack of accessibility to public transportation, and it says the city will engage CT transit and such. All right. But here's the big thing. There's two TOD sites planned for Bristol, one's in Forestville and one's for across the street. The one across the street is in census tract 090034054-01, or .01, and if you look at, oh, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's Forestville. And if you look at the average, the median income for Forestville, it's $65,921, but across the street, where we're going to start building, will concentrate poverty if we increase the amount of housing in that area, because the median household income across the street is only $36,240. Another very concerning part about it, though, is if you go to the state's website and you look at what they call a guide to fair and open communities, it says that municipalities need to look at these demographics on not just the citywide basis, but a regional basis. If you look at the MPO development from here all the way to Hartford, you're going to find that Bristol's median income is significantly higher than a lot of the highly populated areas and urban centers like Hartford and New Brighton.
Thank you, Sean.
So does this mean that we're going to build across the street and build housing over there, and then the state or the federal government's going to say we need to build a bunch of housing?
Thanks, Sean.
In the downtown, or do we have the right amount of low income? Do we not have enough low income? Do we need low income from Hartford and from New Brighton?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Kate Matthews.
Good evening, Kate Matthews, 47 Prospect Place. I'm here to tell you that you made a mistake. A motion to kill a motion requires a two-thirds roll call vote before you can deal with the underlying question. You didn't do that. Your vote to reappoint Diane Ferguson was procedurally improper, violated the rules of this forum, and is invalid. Luckily, pursuant to Robert's rules, you can vote to rescind and revote on it, and the six of you here can do it over again, and you can do it the right way. If you want to move the motion, do it all over again, because what you did is wrong. Her reappointment is invalid, and that's why when Councilor Brown was asked for a point of information or a point of order, you should have had a parliamentary question taken. Perhaps Corporation Counsel could have assisted you with that, because clearly your knowledge of Robert's rules is subpar. That's point one. Point two, I did come here to talk about charter revision, and hopefully I don't go over my time. The first one that I have for charter revision has to do with your statement, Mr. Mayor, at the 2015 mayoral debate, that you were going to push for a budget referendum on so-called big-ticket items. Well, I was present at the March 21st, 2016 Charter Revision Commission meeting, where the chair noted on the record that although you had proposed such a referendum to go before the Charter Revision Commission, you gave them no support, you gave them no information, and therefore, they were not going to be able to consider it, and they took it right off the agenda. This big-ticket item referendum that you proposed and you promised before the campaign, during the campaign before the election, turned out to be nothing more than a meaningless campaign promise, and you never had any intention of delivering on it, and I hope the public pays attention, because you are the epitome of two-faced when it comes to promises before an election and whether or not you're going to deliver. It's just one more aspect of the bully you obviously are. I am appalled at the fact that the people on this city council were robbed of their ability to have discussion on an issue that's clearly of import. To consider that you would even do that is absurd, but to see that you did it without knowing how to do it just floats my boat, because I cannot believe that you did it the wrong way. So hopefully, your legal counsel will get behind you, and you can figure that out, but I would suggest that you rescind and revote. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Minor.
Greg Minor, 88 Anderson Avenue. I was going to ask you why the item of reappointing the personnel director wasn't on the agenda, because I knew that her term was up, and in my day, when a department head was up for reappointment, it would be on the agenda, but apparently, what you did was you buried under appointments, which is normally...
It's always been, it's always been under the appointment.
Thank you, Greg.
Always.
Which is normally reserved for appointments to boards and commissions, which are not terribly controversial, and usually people don't comment on them.
Looked back over my term, and over the last six terms through Mayor Ward, it's always been on the appointment list.
Okay. Thank you, your honor. Thank you.
Crystal Myers.
Crystal Myers, 221 Wall Avenue, Bristol. I rise to support the Board of Education's proposed budget. As someone who is a product of the Bristol school system, I value the education I received in Bristol, but I had a difficult decision to make when graduating college. Should I move back here with my family and friends, or stay in Northern Virginia with a booming business? I obviously decided to move back here. I faith in our community to look beyond the current fiscal hardships, to see a Bristol we can all be proud of. This includes our education system. We elected knowledgeable and strong leaders in November on the Board of Education to do what they feel is right for our community and for our children. They have crunched the numbers that most of us can't even fathom, and they came up with a comprehensive plan to invest in our future. Our schools have been underfunded for years, both on the city and state level. The Board of Education is asking for an increase to the budget this year, but more than 3.5 percent of that is simply to keep the schools open. That money is going to contractual obligations. We need our teachers, we need our staff and the other employees to make our schools function, but only additional increases will go to actually helping our children. When most young couples are looking for a place to settle down and raise a family, they ask a few simple questions. How far do I have to commute to work? What kind of local entertainment is there? And how are the schools? We, as a city and a state, are faced with tough decisions due to the lack of funding across the board, but balancing the budget on our children's future is not the answer. Our district reference group, which is based on socioeconomic status, includes towns such as Manchester, Middletown, Torrington, and Stratford. There are 15 towns total in our DRG, and 14 other school districts are outspending Bristol, all of them based on the same income levels as us. What does that tell my generation? Why do we want to move here? Why do we want to come back? And what does that tell our current families? That our students aren't important? We, as a city, need to start to look at the big picture and to the future.
Thank you. Announcement, starting my fir right.
Yeah, my announcement is, in a long history of being disappointed by your deplorable conduct, Mr. Cockain, tonight is seriously a new low. You continually manipulate process not to serve the interests of the people, but to serve your own interests, and that is deplorable. And yeah, you can bet that I am going to raise my voice for the people that elected not just you, you're not a king, but six other city councilors who are supposed to be representing their interests. So yes, I raise my voice for them, who deserve a lot better than what you have provided, and you should be ashamed for the way that you've acted tonight. Maybe there are certain things that you don't want on the record in regard to your relationship with the Personnel Director's Department at this point in time. Is that perhaps it, Your Honor? You have not acted very honorably tonight, and the entire city is witness to that.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Councilman.
Yes, I know we had Steve Collins here tonight to remind everyone of the Bill of Rights, but I had a funny little thing to go with that. So again, don't miss the Bill of Rights and a spectacular concert performance, free will offering to benefit the Wesleyan composer Neil Bruce. Among the people who are singing will be the former councilman Eric Carlson. This will be the first time in American history that a politician sings the Fifth Amendment rather than pleading the Fifth, so I thought that was kind of funny. So again, whatever we can do to support Steve Collins, I think would be great. All right? Thanks.
Yes, I have a couple of reports that were just handed to me. One is, Jody Zills usually gives this, Jody Zills, this is the report from the Parks and Rec Department. I am providing you with an update of programs and operations the Parks and Recreation Department is currently doing. The American flags have been installed along the Veterans Memorial Boulevard and Park. The pond aerators have been installed prior to Memorial Day, and the playing fields are now open. The Summer Youth Program brochure is online and registration to begin on May 16. The 65th Perry Spinelli Fishing Derby will take place next Saturday at Page Park at 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The Derby is open to any Bristol youth, ages 13 and under. Golf registration is currently available to any Bristol resident who is retired. The golf league begins play at Pecquabic Golf Course on April 28. Renovations to Muzzy Field are moving along. If you should have any suggestions or concerns on improving the Parks and Recreation Services to the citizens of Bristol, I am willing and available to meet with you to discuss them. Sincerely, Ed Swickless. The second is from the Board of Ed, a letter to Therese Pack. The following motion was approved at the Board of Education meeting held on March 2, 2016. It was voted and unanimously approved to accept the Board of Education roof replacement project at 129 Church Street, Bristol, Connecticut, as complete and to file the final paperwork with the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, Division of Construction Services. Please consider the inclusion of this motion in upcoming city council meeting on April 12, 2016, which I'm doing. And then, from the School Readiness Committee, the School Readiness Council voted last week to submit the second year of the School Readiness Grant, keeping the slot allocations the same. The Imagination Museum of Early Learning was full with 118 full-day, or full-day, full-year slots. The Board of Education has 180 part, day part, day, I'm sorry, 180 part-day, part-year slots. Bristol Preschool Child Care Center has 106 full-day, full-year slots. This year's request, including the quality enhancement funds, is anticipated to be $2.9 million. Bristol Preschool Child Care Center, with the opening of their new site and located at the former Jennings Schools, is looking forward to ways to expand their funding. The School Readiness Grant Manager will work with them to come up with a plan to request an additional funding at the Office of Early Childhood. And lastly, it's time to register for kindergarten, April 18 through May 6. All families with children that are entering the kindergarten in the fall should register for kindergarten during this time. Parent orientation will be held at the schools during May, and I just want to emphasize that is very critical, because many times, parents come in at the end of August to register their children, which really causes chaos. So if you can pass that along, again, it's April 18 to May 6, and those are the committee reports that I have, your honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Did talk about the Board of Education and the roof replacement. Could we have a vote on, on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to finalize for the Board of Ed, that their roof on the church street building...
We're doing a motion now?
Yes, it was...
The following motion was approved. I thought it was an announcement that the, that it was approved.
It is approved, but then the council has to just say, yes, it's complete, so that they can do what it is. It authorizes the Board of Education to finalize the paperwork with the state of Connecticut.
I, I'll make that a motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Councilman?
Nothing.
Councilwoman?
I have a few announcements. The first is that the Transportation Commission and the Disability Commission, both of which I have been a part of, I'm not sure if I still am, based on the just-announced reorganization. In any case, the Transportation and Disability Commissions are presenting a transportation forum at the hospital tomorrow, excuse me, at the library tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. It's being presented by part of the state DOT. Their, the part of their outreach is called Way to Go Connecticut, and it will be, have a particular focus on disabled and elderly folks, how to use the bus services that we have, the enhanced buses that we have here in Bristol, and other transportation services, and how they would link with the bus services here. So if you know of anyone who would be interested or benefit from that, that's tomorrow night, Wednesday at 6 o'clock at the Bristol Public Library. In addition, it is spring, so it is fishing derby season. The Bristol Park Department is having their annual fishing derby on April 23, and the Pine Lake Committee is sponsoring their third annual fishing derby on May 7. Cheryl mentioned the duck race. Both the duck race and the Pine Lake Group, as well as the Cemetery Commission, are planning some spring cleanups in anticipation of their spring events, and if anybody's interested in volunteering or participating with those groups, they can contact me, and I'll let you, put you in touch with the folks that are doing those cleanups. I, I do feel that I have to say something about the, the vote that just occurred. You know, I've always been proud to be a Bristol resident, and I've always been extremely positive about government service. I think government service is, you know, one of the highest things we can aspire to. I've never been embarrassed, the way I am tonight, to, to be serving as part of this government. I'm simply embarrassed, and I want to state that on the record, and I've never felt that way before in my life. I've never been embarrassed by government. When I was feeling particularly low as I sat here, Crystal did just give me hope that our future generations still have hope for our future, and I'm grateful to her. So thank you, and that's all.
I have one announcement I didn't make. I just wanted to congratulate Marty Horowitz of Harvest Bakery. I don't know if you read that in the paper last week, that obviously, he sold his business after 75 years. He hasn't been there for 75 years, but he probably seems like 75 years, but I just wanted to congratulate him and, and his family on a wonderful business here in Bristol. That's it.
We have, I have a few things. A lot of big things happening in Bristol, a lot of positive things happening in Bristol. We had a closing on Lot 1 for the pods. Sale price for this land was $703,000, $100,000, $703,000. They are currently under construction. They're clearing the lot. If you go by, you see them moving the trees around. Going to be about 120,000 square foot buildings. That's going to be the anchor building, that's, that's huge for that development. Also, in the Southeast Industrial Park, we have Lot Number 5. We anticipate closing on that lot on Thursday of this week, I believe, is our goal. That is a aerospace company moving from Berlin into Bristol. So we're, we're continuing to bring businesses into town, bring jobs into town, so that's huge. And the last one that I'm most proud of is the American Public Works Association Top 10 Public Works Leader of the Year program seeks to inspire excellence and dedication in the public service by recognizing outstanding career service achievements of individual public works professionals and officials from both the public and private sectors. The top 10 are selected by a panel of judges representing the public works field and other agencies with an active interest in public works professionalism. I am pleased to announce that our very own Public Works Director, Walt Feselka, has been recognized as one of the APWA Top 10 Public Works Directors, Leaders of the Year. He will be presented with a plaque during a National Public Works Week Luncheon in Boston on May 18, and will also be recognized during the APWA Public Works Expo in Minneapolis on August 29. Walter and the other 16 winners will be featured in the May 2016 APWA Reporter Magazine and other publications. Congratulations, Walt. This is huge.
That's quite an achievement, one of 10 in the, in the country. On to number five.
There are 17 items. I would hope that someone would be willing to make a motion to waive the reading, but I understand that there are a few items that may want to come off the consent calendar. I believe item H, and did anyone else have something else?
Any other one want to bring something off the consent? Can we have a motion to waive the reading for the consent?
So moved.
Back up. A motion made and seconded.
And then to approve everything from A through G, I through Q.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Just announce your recusing yourself, please.
Issue number H, or letter H, I have to recuse myself. My law firm deals with the-
Okay, thank you. We'll give him a second to leave. Okay, item number H, can I have a motion to approve a letter number H?
Item number H is the Contract 2C 1676 Sidewalk Replacement on Summer Street to Tobacco and Sun.
So moved. Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I know these were taken into good consideration, but I thought there were some problems on some of the sidewalks on the Boulevard property that Tobacco had done. Are they, were they okayed by the city? Has there been a problem with those?
Roger, Walt.
I guess I'm not sure. Is that a couple of years ago, Tobacco and Sun Dodgers had replaced some sidewalks? That was about four or five years ago, was that-
No, I don't think it was that long ago. I thought it was when they did some replacements on the Boulevard. Is there a problem with any of that? None yet? I just, I had heard that there was a possibility that there were some problems with the sidewalks, and I wanted to make sure that-
I'm not specifically aware of what those issues would be.
I can't, I can't give you specifics, so I just wanted to ask as a point of information.
Can't be anything big, I guess. Ed, did you have a problem with it?
Okay, I'll have to check my information, I guess we're going to vote here tonight, so.
Do you want to make it pending?
No, that's okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. All in favor, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Frank, can you ask Councilman to come in, please?
Who?
Dave.
Councilman?
Thank you. Okay, committee report, starting right from left.
None from me.
Nothing.
I gave my lot of the wrong thing. My computer's not working, so I gave my order.
You remember?
I'm good, thank you.
Yes, first, I'd like to share Jody's committee reports, since she's left. She gave them to me. Park Board, she wanted everyone to know that all playing fields are now open. Summer Youth Program brochure is online. Registration begins May 16th. From the Public Works Board, the lines were inadvertently painted on Memorial Boulevard. I'm sure everyone is aware. The contractor was told to paint last fall, didn't get that done. They were told this spring not to paint the lines. They made a mistake, and the lines were obviously painted. The contractor has made the mistake, and the city will not pay. So, the city's not on the hook for the money the contractor is, so that's a good thing. She wanted to let you know. The other thing from, on my side of the table, is Ordnance Committee. We had a noise complaint by some folks on Intervale Road. We heard that large group of neighbors, and I took it upon myself a couple of weeks ago to go out and visit the property in question. I also think sometimes it's important to go out there and see the problem for yourself, and they do have a problem over there, and I'm hoping that Proleski, excuse me, Councilman Proleski, as well as Councilman Mills, and I can come to a solution for them. I just want to make sure that they know that we're actively looking at it, and we're taking it seriously, and we're not going to brush it aside as just someone else who comes in and tells us their issue.
All right, from the library, "The Friends of the Bristol Public Library invite the public to their first-ever Author Luncheon with bestselling author Stuart Onan, which will be taking place in July." So, I'll remind you again, July 14th at the Doubletree Hotel here in town. Stuart Onan will be discussing how he came to write three books set in Connecticut, and how libraries helped him to do that. And he will also discuss and read from his bestselling novel, Last Night at the Lobster, based on true events that happened in Bristol and the surrounding area. And like I said, I'll remind you more about that as we get closer to July. Also, tomorrow, for anybody that's interested, is the Kiss a Pig Competition at the Imagination Museum, starting at around 4:00 o'clock. I'm a contestant. There are other contestants in the audience tonight. Mr. Rupi Patton, are you still here? No? Oh, he was here earlier. So, it'll be a lot of fun. Come on down and see one of us kiss a pig. I don't think it's going to be me, but I have nothing against kissing pigs. I like pigs. Also, don't forget to vote on April 26th. The primary's coming up, so whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, get out there and vote. And finally, next month, I believe, we will be doing the Youth of the Year Awards from the Youth Services Commission. It'll be taking place here at the City Council Meeting. It's always an uplifting time, so tune in for the folks at home. And for those of us that like to come to the council meetings, next month will be a very uplifting one, for sure. That's it for me.
And I have no reports. Any unfinished business, starting right from right?
Yes. Unfinished business, first thing I'd like to ask about, can we get an update on where things stand with the hospital negotiations for downtown?
The report, the, the, the purchase and sales agreement is with the hospital attorneys, and we're waiting to get it back.
And what's the next step?
When they get it back, then we'll look at it and go from there.
Your Honor, through the chair. I can update a little bit, too, for the downtown committee.
Sure.
The hospital's moving forward, Councilman. They've got their team in place. They've hired an architect. They've hired design people. I think, I have to check with Corporation Council, but I talked to Attorney Conlon. I think they formally asked for an extension, which is within their rights, under a letter of intent, excuse me?
60 days.
60, they asked for 60 days through May, but that's within, that was pre-negotiated in anticipation that they, on a complicated issue like this, that they would need more time. And they meet, they send their, they identified a project manager who reports to the mayor, I think, a lot-
To the BDA.
And to the BDA Downtown Committee. But, I mean, I know you guys talk a lot. And I think that's the update, with more, a little more detail.
They had an architect, too. I don't know if you know that. They had an architect. I don't know if you know that.
I mentioned that, I think.
Okay.
I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Under unfinished business, I would ask, I don't see the Personnel Director here, but either from Public Works or somebody, could you give all of us, now that we're all gathered in one place, an update about what's happening in City Hall with the lead remediation?
Today, we had a meeting at 3:00, I believe, with the whole city staff. That was our last update. We had Laredo, is that right? Laredo come in and speak to the city employees, give an update. City Hall, for the most part, is cleaned completely. There are some, some isolated spots that they are, they are in the progress of, process of finishing up the cleaning. Those are places that the public does not get into contact with. Maintenance Room, things along those lines, someplace up on the roof, closed it on the roof. But everything is below required limits. We even went below the, the commercial limits to the residential limits, so we're below the residential limits. The employees had an opportunity, as they had two other times, to ask all and any questions that they wanted. I'm told for the first time ever, City Hall was completely shut down, and all the employees were brought into the council chambers with, with signs on the doors, "Be back in 15 minutes", and one case lasted an hour. But I think the employees are very comfortable being kept in the loop, being told what was happening. And we will, from this day going forward, be having monthly checks on everything, just to confirm that they're clean. We, we are still trying to determine the exact cause of the lead issue. They have some ideas, but I'm not going to say what they are until we, until we know exactly 100%. And that's basically where it is.
And will the city be working on any sort of a plan moving forward to deal with these situations systematically, should they arise in the future?
Explain, I don't understand what you mean.
Will we be coming up with some sort of a policy or procedure to report and deal with air quality issues, or lead issues, or whatever the case might be?
I think we handled this very well. We immediately brought in OSHA when we, when we found the issue. We had our professionals here. We immediately invited OSHA in. OSHA was, and while add anything, if I have anything to add to this, OSHA was very happy with the way we were handling things. We are waiting their report back, but they left very comfortable, saying that we were handling things very well. It did, it did put some of the departments out, and uproot some of the departments, and in time of an emergency, that's to be expected.
Right.
The city employees, as a whole, were very well informed. They were, they were kept appraised of all the reports that were coming out. I don't think we could have done anything better than we did. And kudos to Walt, to Dave Oakes, to our maintenance crew. They worked tirelessly. I was here over the holiday weekend, and we had a full staff Good Friday. We had a full staff here. Dave Oakes was here. Roger Russo was here. We had everyone here, even over the holiday weekend, trying to get everything back to normal as quickly and as accurate as we can.
All right. For the, the time lapse from the first time an issue was reported in January to the time that we ended up bringing OSHA and Larrero in to deal with the issue in, what was that, late February? Is that correct?
Well, we believe there was, there was two different issues at that time. They weren't connected. When we brought in OSHA was when we saw the black-
Soot.
Soot. When the first report was, just the air quality wasn't right, but as soon as we saw the black soot, we brought Larrero in immediately. And that's when we did air, we did a couple of tests. We did air quality test. That showed nothing in the air, no readings whatsoever. When they took the, and I'm going to call it a cotton swipe test on the radiators themselves, on the first, that's where they saw the black dust. In that was some lead, and that was contained to very limited areas, mainly in the, well, a little bit of everywhere, really. City Clerk's office was really hit hard. I really don't think we could have done anything different than we did. We responded immediately. When the issue was brought to my office, and I don't know what day it was, that there was lead, it was brought to my office at, I think, 11:30 by 11:40, and I'm just using estimated times. City Clerk was out of that office, shut down, and we were reacting as quick as we possibly can. And I think later that day, we even had the cleaning crew in here starting the abatement. And they worked double shift, the cleaning crew worked double shifts to get this cleaned.
Now, when you say cleaning crew in this example-
The professionals, the professionals.
Okay, not city staff?
No, no, the abatement people.
The abatement people.
The professionals.
Okay, okay.
And it's going to be a large bill, I can tell you that much.
Well.
But we, you gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah, right, right.
Anything else?
Under unfinished business, no.
Councilman?
No, Your Honor.
None?
Nope.
None from me.
New business, starting right from left.
None?
Nothing, thank you.
None?
None, Your Honor.
Well, for me, given Councilwoman Matthews' sound legal opinion and her advice to us, I'm comfortable making the motion to rescind the improper appointment of the Personnel Director for a proper vote.
I will-
That's a form of a motion.
Okay, Ed, wait a second. Motion made to rescind.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. I will vote no. I will not support this, and that's it.
Under discussion before we vote, how about an opinion from Corp Counsel? Was what we did proper?
I think your motion before us is certainly appropriate. I think, I'm confused as to what the first motion was. It was, I think, intended to be a, a motion to call the question, but I don't believe I ever heard that as the actual motion that was made. So-
I did hear that, just for the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So, if it was a motion to call the question, I think a two-third vote, if I had an opportunity to look at Roberts, would probably show that that's accurate.
And I'm correct in stating that it did not pass with a two-third vote to call the question?
The question did not, but the, the underlying motion, then, was taken up, and that passed.
All right, well, to clarify any misconceptions and to alleviate some of the confusion here, motion to rescind that vote, that appointment, which has been seconded.
Again, I will say no. Starting right from left.
Yes.
Question, Ed, why didn't you speak up before?
Nobody asked me.
Nobody asked me, and I'm not a member of your panel.
All right, good point, all right. Yes.
No.
No. Yes.
No, motion fails. Any other new business?
Point of information, does that motion fail?
Again, I think if you took a look at Roberts, that motion does fail, because it didn't pass.
Okay, tie equals not pass, okay.
Any other new business?
Let me think for a second. No, no other new business.
Okay. Resignations, do we have any resignations?
There are some resignations, Your Honor. The first is from Joshua Beckett Flores from the Bristol Housing Authority. The second is from Violet Radomski from the Bristol's Task Force on Energy Consumption. And the third is from Adam Van Gutten for the Startup Bristol Board of Directors or Board of Advisors.
Can have a motion to, thank you. Can have a motion to accept the resignations and send him a letter of thank you.
Point of information, how can we, we already filled those slots without accepting the resignations. Is that proper?
You set the appointment list.
Right, but you, you had brought the appointments up.
You moved the agenda.
Okay. Well, then, we'll put those, we'll put those appointments back.
You, you-
Let me do those right now again?
Yes, it would be the three.
All right, so, motion to accept the resignations.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Adam was one of them, to, to appoint Lawrence Covino to replace Adam Van Gutten. Resignation is no term.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Who's the other one? I don't think any other was on the, on the agenda this morning.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority has been empty for a couple of weeks. Say, that's been empty for a couple of weeks, a couple of months?
Yeah.
That's how we have?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, just Adam was the only one. And while we're talking about this, let me say, anyone out there, if you're interested in serving on any boards, we have a number of vacancies. We'd love to get them filled. Contact either my office or your council people, and, you know, send them a little note on what you would be interested, a little bit about yourself. And every month, the council gets a, a list of what appointments are open, and they will forward me any suggestions that they'd like to fill these positions. We'd all love to have full boards. Okay, appointments, we're, item number 11.
Resolution regarding grant application with Connecticut DOT for fiscal year 2016 distracted driving high visibility enforcement grant and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute. And there is a resolution to read.
Someone can read it. Dave doesn't have it. Dave doesn't have it.
I can read it if nobody has it open.
Nobody has it open. You have it there?
My, my computer is working, so.
Okay.
You got it going?
So, you don't mind if I read it? Yeah. Okay, be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, fiscal year 2016 distracted driving, high visibility enforcement grant, is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth Cokane, or acting mayor, and the chief of police or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application slash funding slash grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash awards slash grant documents. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, starting right from left.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Item number 12.
Resolution regarding grant application to establish smoke detector distribution program to FEMA for a fire prevention and safety grant up to $170,000. And there is a resolution to read?
And I do have that up. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of an application to establish a smoke detector distribution program to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for a fire prevention and safety grant for up to $170,000 with an in-kind city match of 5% is hereby approved, subject to the approval of the Board of Fire Commissioners, and the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application slash grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents or contracts. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Resolution, second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting right from left.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number 13.
Resolution regarding grant application to Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development's Remedial Action and Redevelopment Municipal Grant Program up to $2 million to fund remediation activities at 894 Middle Street.
Someone have it up?
Your Honor, I can read it.
Go ahead, please.
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development's Remedial Action and Redevelopment Municipal Grant Program for up to $2 million to fund remediation activities at 894 Middle Street is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Kenneth B. Cokane-
Kenneth B. Cokane, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application grant, including but not limited to any final assistance agreements entered to, into with the state. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Roll call, starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item 14.
Authorization for mayor to enter into 25-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Fuel Cell Energy Incorporated Danbury, Connecticut, for three and a half acres known as 894 Middle Street for a fuel, fuel cell power generation project.
Mayor, we need to...
Ed, Ed, are we gonna take care of this now, or this, item 14, are we gonna do this when we come out of executive session? We gonna do it now?
This item you can do now.
Okay, you guys are recusing yourself.
Announce it, just...
I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
Mayor, we need to amend the agenda item because 25-year payment plan's not permissible.
It's got to be 20 years.
So it's got to be 20 years.
I can, I can read the resolution and use the word 20-year instead of 25.
Perfect.
Be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, authorizes the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a 20-year payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Fuel Cell Energy, Inc. of Danbury, Connecticut, for approximately 3.5 acres of the property known as 894 Middle Street to facilitate the development of a fuel cell power generation project.
Go have a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
I'm sorry, thank you, counselor, for that, but can we read the, the new update? Because actually, it's not just the 20-year piece that changed, but the name of the entity.
I apologize, I...
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Thanks, Justin. Resolution be, be it hereby resolved that in accordance with authority granted under the City and Town Development Act, the City Council authorizes the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a 20-year tax pilot agreement with Central Connecticut Fuel Cell One, comma, LLC of Danbury, Connecticut, for approximately 3.5 acres of the property known as 894 Middle Street to facilitate the development of a fuel cell power generation project, be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the City Council, City Council for further action.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Is that a resolution?
Yes.
All, resolution, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes.
He's trying to get his attention, he was looking this way and then he looked away.
Yeah. Okay, item number 15, someone want to start reading it while he's coming in? Or, item number 15?
Resolution regarding authorization for Mayor Kenneth, Kenneth B. Cokane to execute school readiness grant program application for priority school readiness municipalities from the Office of Early Childhood.
I can do that one, Your Honor.
Go ahead, please.
Be hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the mayor, Kenneth Cokane, or acting mayor, is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to the application slash funding slash grant for the school readiness grant program application for priority school readiness municipalities from the Office of Early Childhood for the period of July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, second year of grant, including but not limited to any amendments to said application, and any final funding slash grant documents, and any and all agreements, and any amendments thereto with local service providers to implement the grant.
Go have a second.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Resolution, starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Addendum.
Addendum, to approve the Cambodian Buddhist Society of Connecticut and United Khmer Foundation to use the likeness of the city seal on promotional material for the Cambodian New Year Festival on April 16th and April 17th, 2016.
Can I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Executive Sessions, 16 and 17.
And executive session regarding proposal to lease a portion of 894 Middle Street by Fuel Cell Energy Incorporated, and the second is regarding the matter of Bristol Healthcare Incorporated versus the City of Bristol docket number CV-156029235-S.
Mayor, it'll be the town assessor, Mr. DeNoto, joining us, Tom and I, and after the executive session, I know that there's representatives of Fuel Cell in the audience, so perhaps, you know, usually when we go into executive sessions, people kind of leave, so if somebody wants to hear something that might be going on, they, they might want to stick around, that's really for the public.
Are they coming into the executive session, Fuel Cell?
I don't think so.
No?
I think we were just gonna go in.
Okay, and what about Justin? Justin too? Let's bring Justin in.
Justin also.
And what about the Bristol Healthcare one?
No, that's just, that's a tax assessment.
Okay, all right, motion going to executive session.
So moved.
Second, motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Can I have a motion to come back in a session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let the record show, no votes were taken in executive session, do we have a motion to come for us? Who has one? Dave, you have the first one? Who has one on Bristol Healthcare?
I move that the city enter the stipulated agreement in the matter of Bristol Healthcare, Inc. versus the City of Bristol docket number CV-156029235-S, whereby the value of the real property at 400 North Main Street be adjusted to $6,200,000 until the next revaluation. I further move that the city assessor be authorized to adjust the value of said property on the grant list in accordance with this stipulated agreement, and that the Corporation Council be authorized to execute the stipulated agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item, Dave Mills is gonna recuse himself.
Good night, Dave.
I have it, yeah.
Councilman?